Good evening, everyone. Today, January 38, 2025. This is the Board of Selectment meeting. Around 5:05, we're going to open our meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. When you get it, if you would like to talk, ask me to get you the word, and you can come to the podium, say your name, and where you're from, and then we can listen to you. To start, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So today, we, it's a special occasion. We're starting at 5:00 because our administrator has another business going on. So I'm going to move the agenda and have his administrator report to the top.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you for starting at 5:00 today because at 6:00, we do have teacher negotiations ongoing at Quaybog that I will be going to at 6:00. So I wanted to update the board on a couple of projects that have been transpired since the last time we had met. Number one, encore fire protection. So the board had approved a few weeks ago, the boxing room that needed to be done with wiring, additional heat detectors, tying it into our existing fire alarm system. That work has been completed. The new strobe has been installed also outside of the building and planning office, as well as new batteries for the senior center have been replaced as part of their inspection. They were deficient in the inspection report. We had them replace the batteries when they were out here for the fire alarm system down there. So that project is complete. Chief Lavoy is coming by tomorrow to do just an inspection of the work and to test the system, and we're anticipating that project to be closed out. So the next project that we are working on is the Senior Center Kitchen Project. So that started last Friday with a shutdown of the Senior Center Kitchen, and has wrapped up about 95% of the work is wrapped up as of today, so less than a week. Last Friday, we had a disconnect of the range by the plumber, as well as a disconnect of the old dishwasher down at the Senior Center. Over the weekend, the general contractor was in there, removed several wood cabinets that needed to be removed in preparation of the new sanitization area that has been installed there. Upon removal of the undercabinet where the existing dishwasher is, the old dishwasher, it was noted that that dishwasher was leaking internally and ultimately rotting underneath the floor. That was not visible, you know, with the naked eye before, you know, we got involved in the project. So that in particular is an additional cost that we're going to have to bear for the project. It's about $2,000. So the floor had to be re-fixed and reshored up, and new flooring had to be put down in that area.
And that was done, right?
That was done.
Okay.
So that project, I said is 95% done. There is an issue with the vendor, Kittredge Singer, that we have to work out on Monday. We're having a meeting with Kittredge Singer on Monday. The two side tables that we had ordered, they were custom ordered, and that was basically holding up the entire order because they were custom. Well, they came to us, they weren't custom because they're not, they don't fit to the specifications that we had asked for them to fit. So those side tables have to be adjusted, and the order has to be corrected. And so we're going to be working with Kittredge Singer on Monday to get that resolved. But the dishwasher, the range, all hooked up, is ready to roll, shouldn't interfere with the, you know, the operations of the kitchen other than just getting those side tables installed at some point. So we're working on that. Final inspections for electrical and plumbing are also going to happen on Monday. So all of the contractors were required to, you know, obviously pull permits, and those final inspections will be happening on Monday. So that project, we anticipated it in about a week, so, you know, we got 95% of it done in less than a week, so we're right on schedule for that. The only thing that, you know, is a challenge was obviously the floor, but the floor has been resolved, and then the side tables, which we're going to resolve on Monday with Kittredge.
Are they working tomorrow? Are they working tomorrow?
The Senior Center is, yeah, but there's no other work that needs to be done down there.
Okay. Are they able to serve food and stuff yet?
No, not yet, not till probably Monday.
Okay.
So the Wrights Mills Master Recovery Plant, we just got working with Weston and Sampson. They have scheduled out the next Phase Two public meeting, which is going to be on February 26th with a snow date of May, of March 3rd, uh, March 5th, sorry, March 5th. They tried, you know, to make it happen at Wrights Mills. The gentleman who's in charge of Wrights Mills, the watch, the night watchman, is away from his position at the moment, and, you know, we weren't able to get that coordinated with him. So instead of letting this, you know, lag on for another month or so, we felt that it was important to have the public meeting and to get the second phase done because we have to wrap up the grant by June. So we're going to have the meeting at the Senior Center. So the public will be out there. We've already started to post the notices. We're going to continue to post notices down at the Senior Center and some of the local businesses and libraries. I'm having a meeting upcoming with Rutland Dispatch on February 11th. They're going to talk about two important things. Rutland is looking to go towards a district model approach with the hopes of, if they go to a district model, that maybe more communities can, you know, can join the district model and hopefully lower everybody's assessment. The more people that pay in, maybe the less the assessments. And also, a district model approach would allow Rutland to have more access to grants. Right now, they're tied with some of the grants that they can get because they're not in a district. And so the state looks at that. If they were in a district, there's more opportunities to apply for different grants. They're also going to be looking at their budget. Our assessment this year is going to be considerably higher than last year's because last year we were eligible for a grant that we got, and that was the last round of that grant. So we got the grant for the last five years, I believe. This is the, this, in 25, fiscal year '25, that's the last of the grant. The grant's over with. So now we have to pay the full, full, full bill.
Of course, yeah. So with that, if they're going to do a district dispatch, I just worry about spreading it too thin, where we're not getting serviced. I would hate to see where they can't, you know, dispatch our calls because they're dealing with so many other things because sometimes when you get too big, you're not paying attention to the details anymore.
One of the, one of the, one of the good things about this dispatch, and I think this would help out, is that if they went to a district model, then every town proportionately would have representation. Right now, the, it's run by the town of Rutland, and so now every town would have a director on it. So if it's a member of the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator, whoever you select, you would have a person there that would have a say in the operations of Rutland. And so that, you know, the towns would have a little bit of a voice there. You know, there's some cons to it, as well as, you know, is what Selectmen Dufresne had mentioned, but, you know, we're trying to see what all of this is shaking out to be. The Collins Center is doing a study up there on the district model, and that should be released on the 11th. So as soon as I get the study, I will certainly share it with the board, and, you know, we'll go from there.
I would also say make sure you include the chiefs.
Chiefs, oh, yeah.
And Jimmy for emergency management because, again, they are the experts on this, and they deal with them on a daily basis. So I would make sure that you keep them in the loop.
Sure, absolutely. The other matter that I'd want to bring to the board just in my report, I did receive a letter of proposals from the Patrolman's Union, and I think we need to schedule an executive session at some point soon to go over, you know, some of yours proposals and what you would like to see in the next contract.
Rich. So we have a date yet?
Well, Rich, you and Rich said Thursday would work best. Rich was supposed to let us know whether he wanted it morning or afternoon. So since he didn't let us know, you let me know, morning or afternoon on Thursday.
I'm good either day, on Thursday or Friday.
Rich said Thursday.
And I'm good any time during those times.
9:00 AM Thursday.
9:00 AM Thursday?
Well, not 9:00 AM.
Didn't you just say any time?
It's my day, I get to sleep in. I could, I'll be, if we, if Rich can do 9:00 AM, I'll be here for 9:00 AM.
Okay, so we're going to do it on Thursday?
You can move that to 10:00. Then I'll sleep a little bit more, too.
Okay.
Are you available?
Yeah, if I can come up.
You should be here. He's the manager. You're their boss, so.
So it's a proposal to have a meeting on the 10th. No, Thursday at 10:00.
Thursday, 2, 6, 10 AM. All right. I'll double check with Rich and put it on the books.
And the calendar? And in the calendar?
And in the calendar.
So it pops up in my phone and says, hey, you have a meeting at 10:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So on another matter, last night, we had the ZBA meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals met last night. They wrapped up the remand decision for ZPT. That is going to be initiated by David McKay at Myer, O'Connell. He's going to be writing up the remand decision. They're going to sign it. It gets posted for 20 days in the town clerk's office, and then that matter with ZPT should be resolved after that. So they met last night. We also received requests for qualifications for the River and Central Street Improvement Project for fiscal year '24 CDBG funds. So we are looking for two, you know, we're looking for an engineering firm for the design of River and Central Street Improvement Projects. We received two responses from our request for qualifications. One is from Waterfield Design Group, and the other is from Weston and Sampson. So we will be reviewing those proposals and qualifications next week. Myself, Jeremy, John O'Leary, and a gentleman from the Water Department is going to be involved in the review, and hopefully we'll have somebody selected and in front of the board very soon. So we did get those qualifications back, and we're reviewing those two submittals. Last week, I was at the MMA Conference, Mass Municipal Association Conference with Selectman I Hocker. It was a great conference. I was able to have a conversation with my counterpart in Westbrookfield, a new town administrator, Teresa Akrovsky, and she, she's been on the job for about three weeks now. She seems very nice, and she's willing to work on some of the issues that we had talked about with the school and trying to work out, you know, budget concerns on the school moving forward. So I hope to have future conversations with her, and hopefully we'll see her sooner rather than later in some of the budget discussions.
With that said, we also need to work on the regional agreement.
Regional agreement.
Because the regional agreement is expired, and we need to work on that to get that fixed because there's a lot of things in there that need to be corrected, so.
And we'll do that as well. But other than that, that's my report for this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much for keeping us updated.
And good work on the kitchen.
Thanks.
So are we good to let him go?
Yeah, I do have some other couple items I got to talk about.
Okay, you want to?
Sure, if you want to call it the item one.
So we're going to review and discuss the classification and compensation study conducted by the Collins Center at UMass Boston with recommendations on its implementation. Anticipated vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is a copy of the classification and compensation study that was conducted by the Collins Center at UMass Boston. I had emailed you a copy of this earlier, or last week, actually, and for your review. The Collins Center, I thought, did a thorough job with regards to, you know, including everybody in the process, okay? So this process started back in September of last year, and the initial process was started with a survey. So everybody received a survey, answered questions. That survey then transpired to interviews, one-on-one interviews with staff and staff from the Collins Center. When those interviews were done, job descriptions were created based on the information that was prescribed to, by the employee and the Collins Center representative. Those job descriptions were then sent out to department heads for review. They have been reviewed and then sent back with edits and corrections and finalization. And so this entire process, you know, took about, you know, five months to complete, and it is before you today for consideration. You know, it's important that, you know, one of the most vital components of this compensation and classification review is ensuring that position descriptions are accurate and duties and responsibilities are accurate. There were some things that, you know, you know, that weren't clear, you know, for example, if somebody has a, is required to have a special license, like at the sewer plant, or if they're supposed to have a CDL or a non-CDL. Those distinctions draw different outcomes in terms of where people are placed on the wage scale. And so that was all taken into consideration, hours of work is taken into consideration, and the market, okay? So this market that we're looking at is of neighboring towns around us. We're not going to pull somebody potentially from Amesbury or Wellesley or Plymouth County to come work for the town of Warren. It's just, it's just too long of a distance. So we had to be realistic, and they pooled and they got information from surrounding communities. So, you know, it's important that people understand that this is a whole new approach to where people are, okay? And people that are currently maybe, say, a step five on the wage scale may not be a step five on this wage scale, okay? It's all based on where the position is classified and where the position, you know, is located on the wage scale. So where you are now on the current wage scale has nothing to do with where you could potentially be on the new wage scale, okay?
So with that clarification, that doesn't mean an employee is going to end up going backwards and losing money.
Correct.
Nobody is going to go to lose money.
Nobody's losing money. So, but I don't want people to be confused where if they, you know, if they're at a step five and now they're at a step one on the way, on the new scale, and they say, whoa, jeez, I'm a lower step. Yeah, but you're making more money. So, you know, it's, the current system has nothing to do with what is being proposed, and so that has to be clear to all staff. And, you know, the, this particular scale or this proposal that's in front of you, you know, is up for implementation. So, you know, what I mean by that is, is it's recommended that, for example, if you're making $20 an hour now, okay, and you're at a, you know, you're in a grade E category or D category, then you're going to, this proposal, what we're proposing, is that that person, before they're placed on the scale, they are automatically given a 2% increase and then placed on the scale. So if you're wherever you, wherever you currently are on your wage, you add your 2%, and then you're placed to the closest number on the new scale. And so that closest number would be your new rate.
So with that said, potentially, an employee is making more than 2.5% or they could be making more because when they get brought down on the scale, and if that's higher...
Correct.
They go to that highest rate.
Correct.
So, just so people understand that, we want to make sure that nobody's going to lose money.
Nobody's losing money.
They're just...
Nobody's losing money.
It's changing the process and the steps.
And where they're, how they're graded, okay? The steps are also at 15 steps as opposed to our 10-step. So it allows for staff who stay here longer to grow. As they continue to grow, you know, the more steps there are in their, in their, in their box, and there's more opportunities to grow. It also gives the town some flexibility to, you know, if there is a shortage of, you know, chief operators at the sewer plant, and, you know, you needed to offer somebody a little bit higher to start, you have some flexibility, you know? It is, it is something that was thought about and put into consideration. You know, some of the modifications that I'm recommending from the report is as follows. The highway foreman and mechanic, instead of being at a Uh, the the highway uh foreman uh and mechanic, instead of being at a grade C, um, I believe they need to be at a grade B. The uh sewer operator mechanic and the um highway heavy equipment operator, instead of being at a grade D, I think they need to be at a grade C. Um, and as well as um, the um, the fire EMT um positions, um, instead of starting them um at at the lower end, bumping them up to uh to the step four on the uh on the report side of things. Um, meaning that on the on on the um on the report for um, for the Collin Center, they have-
No, that's per the recommendation of Collin Center.
Right. So, the Collin Center has a fire department, EMT personnel, starting their step one at twenty-one, twenty-three. Um, with keeping in line with our current wage scale pace, uh, I'm suggesting that that step one be at twenty-two, eighty-six, um, which is actually step four on the fire department uh Collin Center report. So, as you may recall, four- three years ago, the board decided to give the fire department and the highway department additional hourly money. And so, to in to keep in line with our current wage scale and to keep in track with our current wage scale, I'm suggesting these modifications be done.
Okay.
What I think is very important is to recognize that at some point, the board of Selectmen did this on an empiric way. And now, it's been done by professionals. We've got a grant. We paid for it. They did a study all over the area, so the competition, it becomes more fair. You know, so if we have a position here and they feel like he's underpaid because over there they pay more, they leave. Now, it's gonna be at a at a better level and then we have more chances of hiring new people and more chances to keeping our employees employed.
Now, with this said, the big question, which I know Ray's probably gonna wanna know, how much does this add to the budget for the year?
So, our 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 estimated estimates as of right now, if this was to be implemented with the suggestions that I'm recommending to the board, we're estimating at about fifty thousand dollars.
Sounds about fair. If you look at one position, if we lose one position and we don't have that-
Well, it it costs a significant cost to keep on replacing people, too. Because then we gotta pay for training, then we have downtime, loss of services.
Yeah, there's a lot. Yeah, overtime.
And they really didn't move too much. They only moved a little bit when you look at it. But it, it's in line with every other town that's comparable in size to us. So, you know, I think I think they did a pretty good job. I like the idea of the fifteen steps because it gives more movement for longevity. Um, I'm currently in a position where I'm maxed out in my steps. I can't go any further. And I still got more time in my career, but I, unless I jump out of my job and do something else, I can't go any higher. And, you know, it'd be nice to be able to, you know, get more pay, you know, as you proceed in your career. And I think this would allow the people to stay a little more if they see that and it starts them at a competitive rate, so.
I did share this and I have not shared this with the staff yet-
Nope.
Um, because I wanted to get some direction from the Selectmen. Um, but I I did also send a copy to the FinCom for their review as well. I've not heard from them, um, but um I would anticipate, you know, them meeting on it at some point.
So, Jim, just to make sure, this has your recommendations in it, correct? This one?
That one does, yeah.
Okay.
So, we don't have, we don't vote right now?
Well, I mean, it it's up to the board. Um, you know, uh, departments aren't gonna be looking to formulate their budgets, um, so-
Can this week wait till next week?
If you if you if you want to-
Well, the budgets are due on Thursday.
Has Rich say anything about it?
Because I would like to know what Mr. Ihawker says.
I had a conversation with him about it briefly today. He had he had a question, but he didn't seem to have any um reservations about it.
We could always re-approach this. We got your briefing, so you wouldn't need to stay, but we can re-approach it and ask Mr. Ihawker if he has questions. This way, we all have a fair vote on it.
I'm sure he'll be here later on.
Yeah, yeah, he's supposed to be. He usually gets here about now, but because we started early.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I do have to comment on the next two ones?
Number two, initial review of the computer upgrade plan with a review of a proposal from Entret Technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. So, as you know, we've been working diligently with our IT provider uh to upgrade uh desktops um as part of a of our cybersecurity plan to ensure that we're gonna be compliant with um uh Windows eleven moving forward. Um, that date is in October. Um, and so, um, Entret has identified computers uh that need attention uh right away. Um, and those are the ones in phase one. Uh, phase two, um, are are laptops, for the most part, that um have a little bit of life left in them, but um not much. Um, and we're looking to uh replace uh the ones uh that are in phase one immediately. Uh, we're looking to get um uh Dell computers uh with a built-in um camera um and microphone and speakers. Um, they are um primarily similar to what we currently have, although um um they are going to have thirty-two uh gigs uh on them of RAM as opposed to um sixteen. Um, and uh they are on the state contract list. Um, we do have funds available from a grant that we received of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, that grant um um would pay for uh twenty-one computers um uh off of that or so, thereabouts. Um, and um, the total phase one project uh is thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars would take care of a a good chunk of that. Would leave about fourteen thousand dollars left to finish phase one, which we also have an article reserved of thirty thousand dollars that we could use a portion of that to to finish it up.
And phase one-
Would be all of these computers right here. The sewer department would be on a separate invoice sewer department. I have asked them to uh to um also upgrade their computers uh because they have been identified as as computers that have um um, you know, issues with uh with at with at having updates to Windows eleven. Um, and the um, the sewer department is gonna be reviewing that proposal um at their next sewer sewer commission meeting. Um, again, what what we're trying to do here is to go into and get these computers replaced so that there's cybersecurity, so that we're protected, number one. They have the updates. Um, staff has uh more efficient, more uh speed-worthy computers. Um, and and that uh basically, it's protecting our system. These computers are old um in terms of computer life, um, and they need to be updated.
Okay. The um, phase two, those are just ones that aren't needed immediately.
Not needed right now, but you know, are going to be needed soon.
Yeah, how much would it be to just replace them all now? Phase one into-
Well, we will do that. Um, uh, we can do that. Um, you know, phase one is uh like thirty s- thirty-eight, nine. And then phase two is a little above seven thousand.
Seven thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, seventy-eight hundred.
And we have fourteen thousand left over-
Correct.
From the grant money.
Correct. You know, um, you know-
Why wouldn't you just do them all now, then?
We could, we could.
Because we, if we got the money we allocated and we got it there, instead of doing it in phases and then having to worry about it, because they're just gonna get more expensive as we wait. And then this way, they could just do it all at one time.
Yep.
And then get it done, and then we don't have to worry about it.
Certainly can be done.
Do they give you any other option on computer?
Um-
At least for the laptops?
Uh, laptop, there is a recommendation in there for the laptop, so.
It's a Dell Latitude?
Dell Latitude, yep, so. Yeah, Dell Latitude I-five processor.
I I will really would like to see, this is a, it says a fourteen-inch laptop, you know, for all the positions over there, the extra keyboard with the numbers is very important sometimes. You know, if you're doing town clerk, you know, numbers and everything, at least.
Well, you can plug a keyboard into it.
Then it's more cost, but sometimes the bigger ones are same price. And you said they had thirty-two gigabytes of RAM?
Yes.
You only have sixteen.
No, on the on the desktops, the the the-
Okay.
The uh laptops have sixteen.
Then, I mean, it's a Ultra Five. It's not as fast, but I'm I'm, the only concern, I don't I don't mind those specs because it will work. The load of work is not like they're using the big software or, you know, graphics or anything. But the size, it it does matter, haven't the, you know, if you have a-
I can check with departments.
For example, you don't have it. So, if you have to do a lot of pluses and minuses, you have to go like this, right? And accountant people are all used to be on the right side.
With the amount of laptops that we're looking to purchase, which is nine, I can go to those individuals and say, you know, see if they would prefer a numbers thing on there, especially the people that are dealing with finances.
Yeah, please do so, because every at work, every time I, that's the first thing I I ask and, you know, ninety-eight percent of the people say, "I need that keyboard on the side."
Sure, I could ask them. It's only nine laptops, so.
And where are the specs for the PCs?
They're the ones that are paper clipped towards the back. Right there.
And that includes a laptop for this room. And so, um, I don't necessarily know that you would need the the numbers for this computer in here.
And are we storing any s- any anything on the s- on the computers? Or we hooking up everything into the network?
Should be everything on the network, on the OneDrive.
They're not storing it because the hard drive is so tiny, it's barely big enough to to think.
I do store stuff on my desktop and then, but it automatically syncs to the cloud.
Yeah, that's very important, because two fifty is very, very small.
Very small, yeah. And that's another thing. I mean, we're we're trying to get people away from storing things on their computers because it costs us more in monitoring. The more that people store on their computers, the the more expensive it is to monitor the the computer. So, if they're using the OneDrive, if they're using the cloud, um, you know, it 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 helps.
I'll try.
And this um is off of the state contract. So, these are all um off of the state um Mass State Contract ITC seventy-three. So, we can buy direct from them without going out to bid.
So, it's cheaper.
It's already pre- pre-state prices, negotiated prices.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with the specs, just the small.
I'll check with those departments to see if they would prefer the key on the side.
When we have a lack of vision, a small monitor doesn't help.
Right. And the implementation of this is very important. So, you know, once if we were to get this approved and they were to come in, the other computers have to go. Um, and and those computers, you know, if somebody has an old laptop, well, they can't plug it into the system because that's, that laptop is not supported. It hasn't been getting updates, poses as a cybersecurity risk, so that laptop's gotta go.
Well, you get, that's why we're gonna, we'll have to recover them all.
Right.
So, in order for them to get the new one, we need the old one from you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, back up your files, make sure they're on the OneDrive.
That, all of this includes them, Entret, coming out and doing all that work.
The swap out.
The swap out.
No, it's a it's a good deal, just if I do, if somebody asks me to do numbers and everything, if I'm on a laptop without the numbers, I say, "I can't."
Right, okay.
So, w- with that concern, because I I have my laptop for work and when I get to work, I I run multiple screens. And because the screen is too small on a laptop, but I can just plug that into my monitors and it picks up all the screens. So, I could work from multiple screens when I'm there doing all multitasking. But also, um, I have a keyboard, which I plug in because it's hard doing this. You know, I got the keyboard where it's right there and I could just do it where it's available. Um, so, yes, it's nice to have all of that on the laptop, but it's, I don't think we need to restrict the people. If they want a la- a keyboard, they could plug a keyboard in. They'd use a keyboard.
They're gonna get a keyboard, yeah.
Yeah. So, they'll have a key-
Laptop and keyboard?
Yeah.
The keyboard is coming with their desktop.
No, no, laptop and keyboard?
Yeah.
What do you mean? Laptop plus keyboard?
No.
See?
No, that's where I'm trying to go.
But I think a lot of us, including me, when we get a new computer that has a plugin, I hate those. Mine is wireless. My keyboard and my mouse is wireless. So, I would be more than happy to give somebody that has a laptop a keyboard.
There's gonna be some swapping around from departments.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think we have the best.
And I'm sure when they take these desktops out of it, they don't have to take the la- the keyboard-
No, they don't have to.
Or the mouse.
No.
Because even the touchpads on these, it's kind of a pain.
You can keep them.
I have a la- a mouse that I use.
Those are no problem. Those don't, those don't matter.
And those are, those are inexpensive to do.
Any cybersecurity risk.
So, you know, I think there's, where there's a will, there's a way. So, um, do we wanna wait for Rich or are you good?
I wanna wait for it.
So, we'll table this and then vote on it?
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Hmm, the next one I gotta talk about.
Wage authorization for Jeff Lee Clark, wastewater treatment plant operator mechanic, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, uh, this evening, uh, tonight, um, is uh, the sewer commissioners recently hired a um uh, an operator mechanic at the wastewater treatment plant, Jeff Lee Clark, from Three Rivers. Um, uh, he has a, uh, he is scheduled for his pre-employment physical in drug screen uh for Monday. He has passed his quarry. Um, we are just looking for- He has passed his quarry, um, we are just looking for a wage authorization, uh, for, he is starting at the minimum. Um, and then upon obtaining, uh, his grade four or higher wastewater license, um, uh, we are looking to start him uh, to, at an hourly rate of twenty-five, uh, forty-four or the closest amount on the new wage scale.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Just bumps up a state step.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve Jeff Lee Clark and an employee for the wastewater treatment plant operative, operator mechanic.
Second that, hold in favor?
Uh, David Dufresne, I.
Derek Valizai, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Then you need to go.
And I have to go, alright? Have a good rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Don't miss anything, that's an important meeting.
Jim, I'm gonna move to, um, hold business quickly.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, sir.
Uh, one is, I did my training.
For which one?
Entree.
Entree, okay.
Okay, and as you said, the, the last ones are locked.
Locked, yeah.
And I can't unlock them, there's no click or anything that says.
No, you have to.
Open, open a ticket or anything. No, I'm, I'm being very naive and that's how.
Yeah.
I work, uh, I, you know, you gotta tell the people how to do it.
So you just have to create a service ticket and what it is, is you just go to the, go to Entree Service. Um, it comes up in the dropdown in the email, it's Entree Service, and just say, could you please unlock, uh, you know, Derek Valiz's training for, uh, the previous months and they'll, they will issue a ticket, unlock it within an hour and then you can do this.
Uh, the second one, um, I heard back from the school that they would like to, um, participate on the candidate night.
Okay.
So I need you to give them the information, they need to know when are the elections.
Uh-huh.
Um, so send an email to Mr. Salvatore.
Sure.
Just telling him, you know, the election, these are the dates for the elections.
They're gonna run it, right?
It's their cake.
Okay, alright.
And that's it, that's the only thing they need to know, when it's gonna be, so they can start planning.
Okay, I will send them an email tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you. Copy me, please.
I will do that.
No, don't do copy me. Copy her.
Okay, alright, alright.
Okay, so are you good to go?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for having you do.
Thank you, man.
Good work.
Alright, we'll see ya.
Next, we have a discussion and review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six elections project report. What is it?
Number four.
Okay, the yellow parts are ones that I do not have numbers on because we didn't have the wage scale.
Right.
Um, for a couple of them, the technology, I haven't heard from Entree, what it's going to be. The, um, the hydrants, they're meeting on the fifth to decide how much they're gonna charge us for the hydrants because our hydrants went up the cost, so we're waiting for, um, the white water district.
Phil and the town should get a little discount for this, since we're replacing all their water lines on all these new road projects. And we're saving them a ton of money to do that.
I'll bring it up to them.
I don't know if you agree with that, but, you know, we're, we're doing them favors, so, for them to raise the money.
When you say, who is she?
Oh, Cindy Baxter.
Cindy.
And she, when she talked to me, she said they went up like four thousand per hydrant, but she's not gonna, they're not charging us four thousand per hydrant. But because they didn't install the two hydrants last year or two years ago that they were supposed to, that's why they didn't go up at all last year. So this year they will be going up a little bit, she said. But I will not know what that little bit is. But I will bring that up to her.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like there's, the water department is selling us that service?
We are renting the hydrants from the both water departments, we do not own the hydrants, they do. We rent the access to them.
But yet every time we tear up a road on one of these road projects and go through, we replace all the lines in these new road projects that we're doing through the grants and saving them a ton of money to have to go and do that, and yet they turn around and charge us more.
I will bring that up.
For basic services.
I was trying also how much is to own a hydrant.
I don't know.
We can't own them.
We can't?
No, because they're not our property.
It's not our property, the water department own the water and the lines and everything.
Not on wood, we never even don't use them.
Well, they, they do use them for the fire department.
Yeah, I know, but hopefully nothing's gonna burn out and we don't use them.
No, but.
When you say four thousand per each, it's like, that's a lot of money.
It is.
But they only replaced two, so that's only eight thousand.
Okay, well, we're willing to work.
I mean, add two, they only add two per year, but they might need to replace them. I know the one on Ramsdale, right by my house, the fire department went to test it and they couldn't get it to open. So it might need to be replaced. I don't know.
We need to find out from Adam.
Yeah, last year we paid them forty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars to lease them. I can't remember how many they are.
Let's see, we can have maybe a little chat, I don't like to talk about them without being here to, you know, let us know what, exactly what it is.
Yeah, they, they're going to, we'll, I'll know that next meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'll be good because we don't.
We should probably invite them to a meeting where we can discuss this further and what we're being charged.
Do you wanna do that on Thursday, next Thursday?
It's up to you.
Oh, if it's possible, yeah.
I, I, I would like to talk to them further about it because again, we do a lot of work for them in saving them money and, you know, if they would had, they had to go through these roads, tear up the road, replace all the asphalt and everything during these projects that we're doing, that would cost them a significant amount of money.
Well, let, let's, let's have a meeting, at least we can have a discussion.
Do you want it with both, um, Wes Warren and Warren? Wes Warren did go up less than, just right around a hundred dollars this year.
Yeah, it'll be good to have both on the, on the same meeting and.
I will see what I can do. And then, um, insurance liability and workers' comp, I have not got those numbers yet.
We already know they're going up significantly. They've already given us the heads up on that, so.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a big hit.
But not the exact, I don't have the exact numbers.
Right.
So I'll see if I can get those.
Jim mentioned something about sending it to, um.
Bid?
No, um, the study about the scale rate to FinCon.
Yes.
I was wondering if you have some input yet or not, or if you don't wanna talk about it, it's okay.
Well, we should actually talk about that when Rich is here.
Okay.
Because then we'll vote on it, because then we can get Ray's input on that too.
I don't have any input right now.
Okay, fair enough, no worry, I, I wasn't expecting you to have anything.
We haven't met as a committee. My name's Ray Capaco, I'm on the finance committee. We haven't met about it as a finance committee, uh, and so it would be unfair for me to share, I have my personal thoughts about it, but it, it, I'd rather speak on behalf, if, if I'm gonna speak. I'd rather have the committee speak to it rather than just my personal.
Of course, it's, it's.
Yeah.
But obviously.
So, thank you.
No problem, you're good, we were expecting you to know, to say something, just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when I put in what I thought the numbers for these would possibly be, we were less than one percent increase.
When you put them in?
Yeah, but, yeah, when I guessed on the yellow ones.
Oh, so they're not what was put by Mr. Ferrara?
No, that's why I took them back out to when I gave you this, because I didn't want you to get the wrong impression.
Yeah, with that, he's probably gonna have to do and give you the number, because again, we have to go up the, the two percent and then look at the nearest, um, step.
Right.
Without dropping it below that amount.
Right.
So.
Like a two point five.
So they're gonna change a bit.
Work in progress.
Yep, so next week I'll have all the numbers, hopefully.
Okay.
But I wanted you to see them and so you could look them over and if you had any questions about them.
Yeah, and as Mr. Ferrara said too, our, um, dispatch costs are gonna go.
It's in there, I got the dispatch number.
You got the, the actual number.
I got the actual number, it's in there, a hundred and sixty-six something. And I did meet with Mr. Ferrara before I put these on the agenda to make sure that he was agreed with my numbers.
The, um. With the selectmen, the sports money.
Mm-hmm.
Have all these teams come in and got that money? Because I know for years we've been putting that money to the side and not all of them are coming to take the money.
Yeah, baseball has taken their money almost every year. Football has taken it, I don't know, they have not taken it this year yet, but they did take it last year.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, soccer has not taken any.
I told him to get in touch with you.
Basketball?
Basketball has not taken any.
Softball?
Softball.
Softball. Softball hasn't either, just baseball.
I mean, if there's baseball, there's softball, it would be football and a cheerleader one. Just saying.
Yeah.
Maybe we can discuss those a little bit someday.
Yeah, you know, the money's there for them and if they don't want the money, I don't know if we need to keep on putting it there for them each time.
Yeah, I would say soccer definitely has not taken the money the whole time I have been here.
Just once.
That was before me.
No, with you.
Oh, my first year, you're right.
Yeah, because I delivered the check personally.
Yeah, the first year, you're right. So.
They couldn't come to a meeting and take a picture like we used to.
I remember that now.
Yeah, there's a picture over there with me and my kids over here with the selectmen receiving the money, now they don't show up, even for the money.
A lot of times they don't even show up for the Memorial Day parade. They're dedicated to another town.
That's another book, another story.
Yeah.
So, yep, so, that's, that's that.
Maybe when Richard, we can talk about the teams and, or maybe we send them a letter and invite them here and say, hey.
I'll do that.
We have all these activities and you get the money, but, you know, it's.
Town doesn't even have a softball team, does it?
No, that's why I was asking.
We don't have a softball team, so why do we keep on putting money to it?
I'd rather, I'd rather change the name to cheerleader, because the cheerleaders is very active.
The cheerleaders, they, they actually compete.
Yeah, they do.
They, they represent the town in, in.
In many places.
Regional competitions, so let's.
May, maybe you know the answer to this, if we change the name of a line item, do we have to put it before the town?
I, I don't know for sure, I would expect so, but I don't know for sure.
So that would be an article.
Well, the budget goes in front of the town.
Right.
The budget goes in front of the town, so if you change it, I don't think that matters, because they're voting on the budget and they're looking at it overall. So they're seeing it and if somebody has a question, why did you do this, well, that group has never taken their money and it was just, it's still the same amount, it's just we're dedicating it to sports, just.
Yeah, and we're not adding a line item.
We're not adding anything, we're just moving it over so it can be used, instead of just not being used each year.
I, I think the issue would simply become, the money allocated couldn't go to a new purpose.
Right.
It would start out with, you, 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 I'm sure you could add the new, uh, designation to cheerleading, for example. You just couldn't give them their, the soccer money.
Right.
Yeah.
That goes back into the general.
General fund, yeah.
Yeah. As long as the town says yes.
Okay, so that would be an article.
No, it would just be the budget.
It would just be the budget.
That's right.
Yeah, you would just change the line item on the budget, but as Ray says, we can't do that and use that money this year for it.
Right.
So again, this is the first meeting of one, we'll probably have a few more of these.
Oh, yeah.
Next time when we get, uh, more numbers.
Okay. You don't need to vote on this, right?
No, not at this point, this is just to introduce the budget to you, so you could look it over and we could have a discussion. And I don't have all the numbers, so you can't vote on it anyway.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have a discussion with a possible vote to appoint Madeline with the soccer to the position of assistant town accountant for the three-year term, anticipated vote.
It was brought to my attention by Mr. Ferrara that her term was actually up in October and I didn't realize that we were reappointing her to be three years, I thought that was just an interim thing for Tammy and for Jackie to get to know it, but she apparently has asked, Mr. Ferrara has suggested it, so that's why it's before you today.
Well, and that was my thing too, we have a full-time accountant, why do we need the assistant too? Because the full-time, it was interim and that's what we agreed to.
Right, that's, that's what I thought also, that's why I did bring it up.
This was supposed to go away in certain times during budget season, um, cause our accountants were new when they first came in, they needed the extra help during the budget season to figure things out. But I think everybody should be good now, so I don't know why we would need this position to continue. And this is a paid position.
It is.
Do we know from the account?
I, I do not, Mr. Ferrara just asked me to put it on and said that Madeline asked to do it. So I think that this probably needs to be tabled until we have Mr. Ferrara or the accountant or somebody.
I.
That's my suggestion.
I agree to that, because again, this was supposed to be a temporary thing, um, to help out, um, to get everybody up to par till they learn their jobs and, you know, I, I love Madeline, she's great, she's awesome, but, um, I think we need to allow the people that were hired full-time to do the job, be able to do the job.
Okay, so we're gonna table it and get some more information?
Yep.
Next, we have a discussion with a possible vote to appoint Laura Jean Fitzpatrick to the cable advisory committee for one-year term, anticipated vote.
Wondering when you were gonna make it down here.
I kept listening.
Yeah, but you got the double door shut, so you can't.
Yeah, but you got the double door shut, so you can't hear my feet a little.
Hi, I'm Travis. Blurs on her way down?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, here.
Be down in a minute. Travis Baker, Chairman of Cable Advisory. So Laura reached out to us, would interest in working with us with Cable Advisory and running the channel. Yeah, we, we did the usual. Came up, saw what we do up there and, you know, made sure it was something that she wanted to get involved with. She did, so we'd like to appoint her for a one-year term to start off with and go from there. Now give us a board of five. So that should be full board for a change. That's slowly growing.
Very good. I guess we just have to make a motion.
Remember, you used to be the board of one.
Yeah, basically, so it's taking a few years, but we got there.
All right, are you gonna say something or introduce yourself?
I would love the opportunity to serve the town more than I do now and.
One second, Laura. Just identify who you are.
Hi, I'm Laura Fitzpatrick. I'm a town resident since 96, I think. I really did this in high school and in college, and I really liked it. And this is an opportunity for me to make it stronger, I think. It'd be easier on the committee to make decisions, break up a vote of, you know, two to two. And so with the knowledge ahead in the past, I would like to break it forward now, you know.
Very good. That's very nice of you to get involved. You know, you've been living here for a long time and getting involved with this is, is, it's something special and you should feel proud about it.
I love doing it.
So sir, I don't have any objection. You wanna make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to appoint Laura Jean Fitzpatrick to the Cable Advisory Committee for a one-year term.
And I second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion passes. You're appointed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
She needs to get sworn in on my.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll have to, I'll have to in your box.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion with a possible vote on the recognition of the oldest person in town.
And it's not Joe.
Okay, Joe Contratt, resident. You appointed me to this. Thank you very much. Love you too.
Again, you bring something to us, you better have a solution.
Well, I came up with a list of basically the top six people. And why I picked six people is because if somebody dies, you go to the next person on the list. Very simple. When it comes to these people, they're all over 90. In the last year, we lost three people in town that were over the age of 100. So obviously, it's a decision you have to make. Now, the next page. I would really call it like a senior achievement award, because these people have not only reached the age of 90. They lived through the depression. They lived through World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the landing on the moon. So they have seen more than most of us have. And when you think about it, a certificate of achievement is something, it's not that expensive. And when a person dies, you can simply get another certificate of achievement to put their name on it. I like the idea of a certificate of achievement over a plaque. And I'll tell you why. A plaque is nice, but it's basically a piece of wood that might end up in a drawer rather than on a wall. If we had a plaque, where are you gonna put it? You know?
I don't know. I never got a plaque.
We'll get you one when you retire.
Give them the prices too.
Okay. The price for basically a certificate of achievement is mostly the frame, which is about $25.
We have the black.
We ordered a bunch of frames, sorry.
We did, but those are very black. The one that's $25 is a little bit nicer. So you can then use the ones that we have, or we can order a little bit nicer one for $25.
Well, what do the nicer ones look like?
It just has more wood on it. It's not just the black one being, it's got etching. Sorry, I didn't print one up.
Now, see like with a plaque, yes, they're nice. With the town seal, $125. Without the town seal, 75. And $50 for the setup fee. I mean, I still think because of the way people die. Now, I listed six people here. You could have up to six die in one year. Well, you don't wanna be dumping that much money. Whereas with a certificate of achievement, it's low cost to start with.
That's fair enough. I, I'm gonna throw a question there. So let's say we agree, we get it, we make him. Now what?
Well, you hope that the top person is still alive to start with. And then the Board of Selectmen formally presents this person with a certificate of achievement of being the oldest resident in the town.
I would say since how they're so old, probably the Board of Selectmen or one of the board members would go to their home and present it with taking pictures. To have these 90-plus old people come out in the cold and at night.
I'm fine with that.
Have you met Maggie?
No.
The second one on there?
She's a.
She is not afraid of anything. And she is still driving.
If they, well.
I've known her for 55 years.
Yeah.
My husband's.
Don't snowboard or drive away for her, because she'll get your butt kicked.
So if they would like to come to a meeting, that would be best, but if they cannot, then I think we could do it the other way. But we're only presenting it to the first one until the first one passes.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm okay if.
I think the certificate's a great idea.
You can start doing, I'm, I'm looking at, you're gonna help him do this certificate? Once you get it, we try to see how, if they're willing to come or we, or they allow us to go.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be really nice to get them here, even if we have to have somebody drive them here. We'll have somebody pick them up and, you know, bring them over and we'll present it in town. They'll be able to maybe tell their story, what they've, they've done in life.
They've done in life and.
And then this way, we can learn from them too.
And maybe how they managed to stay alive that long. I mean, in today's society.
I wonder if you wanna hear some of their answers.
Oh, okay, so I, I like. You guys gonna do this certificate or certificates?
Shot of scotch a day and, yeah.
And then you're gonna make that contact and that invitation, and then let us know what, what else we have to do, okay?
That would be nice, yes.
So Mrs. Dusty is gonna help you out. You okay with that?
I'm fine. So are we ordering a nicer frame or the other frames that we have been giving out, fine?
We could do the nicer frame.
I will order the nicer frame and then.
Okay, it's coming out of you guys' budget. You realize that's right.
Yeah. I'll, I'll even, even donate it if you want to, but.
No, it's fine. You have the money in the budget. I just wanna make sure that this was understood.
Yeah.
And I have the nicer paper to do it on, so that's good.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Want, I, I did this example, but down here would be the town seal. Is that what you want?
Yeah, it looks good. And then just have our signatures on it.
Yeah.
So we sign it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you too.
Okay, thank you. And then since Joe's the awards committee now for the seniors. Are you signing it too?
Of course.
No, I'm just a little schmuck. He does the research.
Thank you, Joe.
Good job, sir.
Now we move into emergency management monthly report for December 2024 and January 2025. Jimmy?
Evening. Hi. Jim McKeon, Emergency Management. Come through with my December and January reports. December, December 1st, we tested the Warren sirens. Everything went good. December 6th was our Warren tree lighting held in downtown area between 4:30 and 8:30. We had assistance from Charlton and Westbrookfield teams also. We helped with parking, road closures. Their new event went well. December 8th, we assisted town Westbrookfield with their White Christmas. Four members helped out, helping people cross the street, basically. Between 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. December 17th, we assisted the Warren Police Department with their annual toy drive pickup, which was located at the back of the Shepherd Building in 5 and 9. One member assisted. We also used our light tower to light the back up and they used our utility trailer to haul their toys. We're always glad to help them and support them in this great effort. It was a good. Onto my January report. I decided to throw this in. I know we're not completely done with January yet, but pretty close. The test of the Warren sirens on the 5th of January. Now, on the January 9th, we got a word, cause we're in the regional planning committee with the Brookfields and Spencer. They worked on a grant, $5,000 of it for a plan development. And 400, $4,992 for 24 members, four from each community, to do an eight-hour training. And $3,943 for decon, the equipment, for a total of $13,935. The host community, I believe is Westbrookfield, we don't have to do any grant paperwork or anything. We're just getting the benefits. Being able to send some of the people and some of the equipment that they're gonna get. Coveralls, gloves, some tape. This equipment would be basically just, they're going to use the equipment they had to do the training, so they re, replenish, replenishing it. And without regionalization like what we did, we probably wouldn't have been able to get these funds. There hasn't actually been a set of when this is gonna happen, but this is, the grant's been awarded to our group in town. January 15th, Kevin from EMA stopped by, helped out with the, some closeout stuff for the EMBG grant, Emergency Management Performance Grant. And he also was in talks of possibly doing some type of tabletop exercise with the town in some way, police and fire and everyone. So I'm gonna be chatting, figuring out if anyone wants to be involved in that coming months. January 20th, we had one of our larger snowstorms, between five and eight inches fell through town. Good thing it was, it was on a holiday. Didn't affect school. It was lighter, less people on the roads. It was easier to clean up. And also over the, this month, ever since the new year, I've had people interested to join CERT. So I met with like four people, two from Westbrookfield's side and two from Warren. So I'm gonna start introducing them to come to our meetings and see if they keep their interest. But I'm happy, very happy that we got that much interest for a new year. Things are looking brighter, I guess, on that behalf. Hopefully it continues. And I told these people, I said, if you have other people that are interested, you know, send them, send them on down. That's pretty much my report.
All right, so, so it's, it, so it becomes a record. You are in charge of the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. A program that educates local citizens about disaster's preparedness for hazard that may impact their area and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization and disaster medical operations. And I'm reading this off our website. And how is CERT doing? How are you guys doing?
Well, we are training as we can, but like I said, we're straight, if we get more people involved, we can do more.
Okay, so you need more people?
Yes, and if we have four people that stick with it, that's, that's good.
So to all the residents in town and including Westbrookfield, CERT team is looking for more members.
Yeah, we're always looking for, and we can find a job for pretty much everyone.
Awesome. You're, good job.
Sir, you wanna say something?
I would recommend you putting up a post on Facebook, probably every couple of weeks or whenever you can, on, you know, how to join CERT and that you're still looking for volunteers.
Yeah, we, they do, we do have a Facebook page, Warren Westbrookfield CERT. You search it on Facebook.
But people have to look for it.
Yes.
What happens is people are looking through the neighborhood watch sites, you know, Westbrookfield Neighborhood Watch or Warren Neighborhood Watch. And if you just put it out there and saying, hey, we're looking for members and you could join and be a member of CERT and help your community in, that would probably get out to a lot more people too. And then even on the website, a lot of people join the website, so you can send out updates. So if you post something on, on the website, the town's website, you could actually send a notification and it will send it out townwide, looking for people and how they can apply. And it would go for, to anybody that put their email address into that.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So just get it out there. Get the word out.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I've been trying.
Very good.
We'll keep working on it.
Thank you, sir, for all what you do. You and all your members are a great asset to the town.
This time of year, the next two, two months are kind of a slower, not too many events coming up, but we do have one other event.
We don't want any disasters either.
Yes, it'd be quiet. It's, you know, tranquil, tranquil. And that's when you plan and try to organize all your, everything together.
You're the best.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
One other thing I have quickly is in talks with planning of a Earth Cleanup Day in April. More to come on that, but it might be April 12th. We're tentatively looking, working with a couple of community members in the parks.
It's a Saturday?
Yes.
That'll be great.
The schools. Just kinda wanna put that date out that we are putting something together for the spring. There'll be much more details to come.
Awesome.
It's pretty much what I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Nope. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
It's not Easter weekend. Last year was Easter weekend.
It's before the.
Yeah, it's the week before Easter. That's good.
So clean up the town before Easter?
Yes.
So we all.
Meditation.
Yeah. Very good.
Awesome. We, it's our turn to go through the warrants and bills.
All right. Is that Rich coming in?
I don't think so.
Oh. Okay, for the warrants, I'll make a motion to pay the.
For the warrants, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll twenty-two, the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Accounts payable twenty-nine, for the amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and six cents. Accounts payable twenty-nine A, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And accounts payable thirty, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. And thank you for writing the whole thing.
You're welcome.
I second that.
Uh, David, David Dufray, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye. Warrants approved. Next, we have the bills. And I'll make the mo- a motion to pay the following bills. Turley Publications in the amount of seventeen dollars and sixteen cents. KP Law for a total amount of one thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. Merrick O'Connell in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Modern Pest in the amount of a hundred and seventeen dollars. Encore in the amount of five thousand ninety dollars and eighty-eight cents. National Grade for a total amount of three thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Master Telecom for ninety-three dollars and sixty-one cents. W Mason for three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve cents. Marlin Leasing for one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. SBA for one thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents. Town of, Town of Rutland for a hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And then a reimbursement to Mr. Rich Ihawker in the total amount of seven hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents. Okay, I second that. All in favor?
David Dufray, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second that. All in favor?
David Dufray, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye. May not approve. New business. Do we have any new business? You mean none?
Yeah, there's a couple things that I'd like to bring up. First of all, George's Pizza was wondering if they could um if they can have a larger dumpster, uh, you know, like a regular food service dumpster, put over in the municipal parking lot and store it there, because they don't have the room to store it. In their um, area, they have two smaller ones, which are right along the guardrail of the river, because that's the only place they can put them. And it's getting to be a problem, because like, you don't want anything spilling over and going down the river, the bank of the river or anything. And they, it's hard to get vehicles around there, because there's a property right there too. So it's causing some problems for them, and they were just looking to see if they could put a dumpster over in the municipal parking lot. I said I would bring it to the board.
There's some space on, on, on the parking lot over there, far in left corner.
See, we have the police vehicles over there.
They, they park on the right, there are five spots over there, but there's a. But, you know, they're.
Well, we can't take the water department property. We can't put it on that property.
Well, I'm just saying they access that garage through that back left of the parking lot.
So they go through that little section there where those parking spots are?
So, yeah, they'll drive in front of where our cruisers are and they go to that garage. I don't know if that's where Derek was talking about.
Yes, yeah. Cause that's where I see them, because you guys parked the cruisers right there in those last spots. And you can't put it up front, you know, you can only put it in the back.
But if they park beside, if they put the dumpster besides where the cruisers are, water just, water department still can get in.
Can we put the dumpster in the dirt that's right there, or is that go, is that the other property?
So I think the first thing, we need dimensions for the dumpster.
Right.
Right?
Well, it's standard dumpster, it's, it's.
Could be a half-size car, a full-size car, you never know.
It, it's, it's about the size of a small car.
And who's gonna, we have to think about how it's gonna get it empty, right? Because there's not much space there either.
Right.
Well, that's more of a straightened shot.
It is.
You don't have to try to maneuver. Sometimes I know that the people that rent, park their cars right in front of the dumpsters. So if it's an empty day, if you can't empty it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you put it in the dirt, they can't empty it.
But that parking lot's never totally full.
No, but if they pull in, the water department's pulling through. You know? We don't wanna stop them. And I wouldn't really like to put a food dumpster right next to the building either. Because, you know, it may get a little stinky during the summer and they might not be very happy of having this dumpster right next to them. We gotta figure out where it could go, if we could do that.
Salu, bless you.
Excuse me.
Yeah, the, the worst, from the worst, the best place is that left top corner, at the end of those five parking spots. I didn't know that they use that as an entrance for the water.
That's what I was thinking of, is that spot too, if we're gonna do it.
Well, that shouldn't impede them from getting into their driveway, into that. It shouldn't impede them.
Well, they cut through those parking lot, yeah, those spaces. Yeah, I'll have to look at it more and see.
More information?
Yeah.
Size of the dumpster, um, how, how, how much space it, the truck who's gonna empty the, needs to operate? Cause in, even my best will trying to help the pizza place, I don't think in the front will be a good idea.
No, we don't want it up front.
That's, that won't look good.
Yeah, they, they didn't want it up the front either. They don't wanna make it look bad.
Yeah, that, that, that corner is perfect. But we need to know if the, the truck is available to get the trash out.
Maybe we could check to see if there's enough room to put it back there and, and, you know, towards those last spots in the dirt. But allow for the water department vehicles to get through there. I'll talk with the water department too, and I'll talk more with George.
Okay, so you're gonna handle it and report next week?
Yes.
Trying to see the property line.
Yeah, I know the old dry cleaners, their property comes up to that section too. You know, I was thinking like, if that land wasn't so contaminated, it'd be really nice to just buy, you know, get that land and then make it to a municipal parking lot, a large parking lot for that community.
I think that should be part of the uh, study of the common, to look for that land.
Well, we'd have to have it cleaned up.
Well, if it's only parking.
Well, no, but once the town owns it, we're responsible for it.
Well, we gotta put a price on it.
And I'd hate to take it, and then all of a sudden somebody turns around and says, oh, you're gonna spend the two hundred, two hundred thou- thousand dollars to clean it up, plus whatever it is. It could be, it get pretty expensive.
Okay, it's hard to tell. It's about three feet, you know, where that shed is for the water? If we go three feet behind that, that's where the property line goes towards the road. Close, these things are, they're never that accurate, so we may have some space behind those parking spots on the left side. We'll have to, dimensions again, we need information. Tell them that we're willing to help, we're trying to help.
All right, we'll talk, George. And then also our new custodial um, person. I was meeting with him today and um, I asked him if he needed anything to help out. And the only thing he could really think of is, he would just like a backpack vacuum. To be able to do vacuuming throughout the building and not have to push around a vacuum. The backpack ones, they just put it on and be able to vacuum. I told him to get us a price and he'll get that to Mr. Ferrara. But he, he requested, that's the only thing he would like to get um, that he knows of right now.
Okay, good.
And then um, another thing is, I know Jim's not here, but do you think you can have somebody look at the stall in the men's bathroom? The lock on it has bro- been broken since I've been here. And it's one of those things, you gotta stick your finger into the hole and then move it over.
We have one in our, in the ladies room too.
Maybe we can get that fixed, so we don't have to do that.
Then, is it downstairs or the upstairs one?
No, right here in the men's room.
Well, there's a men's room upstairs too.
Yes, I, I don't use that one.
So downstairs.
I don't know, there might be another one, I, I don't know if that one's broken up there, but I know this one's broken. And if you have the same thing in the ladies room, you might wanna have that locked too, see if we can get those locks fixed. Cause I don't want somebody sticking their finger in there and then getting a cut, you know, because they ran their finger across metal that they shouldn't.
Okay.
And that's all I had for new business.
All right, good. Old business. Do you have any old business?
I put it down, you ha- count, you handled it.
I did that already.
Yep.
Correspondence? So according to this letter, KP Law, it's notifying us that the rate change effective on July first of this year, the hourly rate for the town council legal services will increase by ten dollars to two hundred and forty dollars.
But then you look at the second page and it increases even more.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Okay, in general, they are telling us it's gonna be more expensive.
Yep.
So I see a lot of numbers. Three hundred and seventy-five an hour. If fees are not paid by municipality, or three forty-five an hour if paid by the municipality. Comprehensive. General zoning, bylaw revisions, review, comprehensive form of government charter of special act adoption or amendment services, three thirty.
The cable television licensing.
But how much it was before, it doesn't say, right?
But we don't have to do that for a while, we just did it.
Okay.
Right, and that's the advisory committee, right? Cable advisory committee? Yeah, it's going up three thirty now. So Travis, be prepared for um, paying three thirty to KP Law now for your cable license.
Any more correspondence?
Yes, yeah, Merrick O'Connell went up.
Rates will be two sixty per hour for non-litigation matters and for litigation matters, three hundred and ninety-five per hour for partners and three twenty per hour for associates. On a side note, I think I'm in the wrong business.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna go get my law degree.
Yeah.
I took the bar exam and I passed. I was at the top percent.
Nice.
Awesome.
I got offered to a law school and I just couldn't take the time off from work to do it, so.
Just, now it's time to think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I might wanna reconsider that.
And then the last correspondence you have is for, the town clerk would like to have the um, Jim from mid-April through May sixth, when we have our elections.
That's a no-brainer, yeah?
Of course.
That's it.
Do you have any comments or concerns?
No, no, I'm.
It's been very quiet.
Yeah, it's been very quiet, and I, I think it's getting to the point where we need to start looking at sidewalks going down sixty-seven. You know, from Warren to West Warren again, because I know the state handles that. But at some point, we need to really get on to the state to start handling it, because there's a lot of debris on those sidewalks. And that's after the, the winter and spring comes, you're gonna have debris washing down from the hills and going on, covering those sidewalks, and we need to get them cleaned up, so people can go through there. The state needs to be doing that.
Agreed. I don't have any comments or concerns. Do you have any comments or concerns? Does the public have any comments or concerns? Yes, Joe?
Well, I had been watching the planning board this past week on YouTube. And I'd like to thank David for some of his remarks. You read my paper on forestry management. And what forestry can do, basically on dirt roads and in woods. And I am so grateful that you read my paper.
I try to keep up on everything that people hand me, and, you know, I listen to what you say, Joe.
You just about quoted it exact. For those who have YouTube, it's right about the forty-nine, fifty-minute mark where David made his remarks on ruts by trucks, by trees, and the resulting effect of water buildup. Thank you, David.
You're welcome. And I've seen it from personal experience. It happens, big heavy vehicles go moving in and out of there, doing things like that. It can do quite a bit of damage and change the environment and the layout of what was originally there, and change the flow of water streams.
Yeah, a good example is when you go to a park and it, with trails and it says, no motorized vehicles allowed, because of that.
Yeah.
You know, it's nice to go in a motorcycle and be, but it destroys part of the land on a bad way for conservation. Is anybody on Zoom?
Uh, no, just WCAT six.
Right. Next meeting is February the sixth, twenty twenty-five at six.
Are we gonna do six PM? Because I know Mr. Ferrara is meeting again next week, isn't he?
I don't know, he didn't say to me, but I, I, I believe it, they're not done, so I think they're still meeting. I don't know, he didn't say to me, but I, I I believe it, they're not done, so I think we're still meeting.
No, they're gonna be doing it for a while, so let me check to see.
So we'll le- leave the time open. We don't know if it's at five or if it's at six.
Just be prepared.
Well, he's the one that put six on here. I didn't, so, but I I think you're right. I think he is going to be doing that. So we should probably count on five.
Um. Did you send it in an email?
Well, Mr. Duff is supposed to be here next week. So maybe they're not doing it next week.
Hmm. Yeah, I was just looking to confirm if he was or not. Can't find the email.
Because I know he, we had um Superintendent Duff for this week and he says move him to next week at six o'clock.
Okay.
So we'll leave that.
Keep it at six, yeah?
Okay. Pencil it down. Next.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, we adjourn.
Good night, everybody.